In business, 78823, declarations any suspicious new interests. We are quiet in the audience, please. If you want to talk, you can go outside. Number two, apologies for absence, 78923. Here we have apologies from David Blackburn, Peter Jeremy. And Hazel McCambridge, thank you. And 79023, the minutes, confirm the minutes of ceremonial for council meeting held on 27th of February. Are we happy that they've been signed as a true record?
Yes.
Okay. On to 79123, committee meeting minutes, the amenities of the 5th of March. What, Council Harvey, please, thank him.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to present the minutes of the meetings committee on the 5th of March.
My, Chris, mate. Near your mouth. Good down, Chris.
Sorry. Never realised I'm that quiet. Shall we start again?
Oh, Stuart's got his own.
Okay, I'd like to present the minutes immediately. On the 5th of March, they're all resolved apart from one recommendation. Everyone has the right to play.
So it's a recommendation, do we have a proposer? And a second, please?
Everybody. Proposer?
Yep. Absolutely. Harry to Council McDormall. All those in favour? Okay. Moving on then to the planning meetings of the March. It's myself, I believe, who's in attendance at that one. And present the planning meetings of the planning meeting for the 5th of March. It's all resolved, business. Leave? Yep. All those happy, agreed?
Agreed.
Oh, would you wish. Chancellor, that was a lot. Hacked.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. On to the pilots and personnel of the 19th of March. Council Jeremy is not in attendance. I'm understanding that Council Blake will make those, please.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Any, sorry.
Shall I use this one?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
This one's on, right? That is working here. Um, I'd like to present the Finance and Personnel Committee meetings of the meeting held on the 19th of March 2024. There were two recommendations, one of which is a separate agenda item. The second recommendation relates the adoption of the financial risk assessment to full council.
So, thank you. So we take that recommendation in, obviously, and Sir Har proposed, and Council David Blackburn seconded. Are we happy to, in David's absence, to have Council Blake want to second that? So they'll show them, you're all in favour? You, it's Carrie. Next one.
The remaining minutes have resolved items. I move the minutes.
Yep. Thank you. You're all happy to move the minutes?
Yep.
Very, thank you. On to venues and markets of the 20th of March. Council Land to present, please.
I'm happy to move the minutes for venues and markets on the 20th of March this year. All items resolved, business.
Move minutes?
Yep.
Very good, thank you. Now move on to Mayor's remark and reports. Quite a busy... Busy month. Yeah, just, um... Think I'll follow up on the, um, the Dandenmark Supermarket spray. I there met this trust of MP who questioned me about the debt fund, and I did ask for some clarification on what that would be. For those not aware, in the budget, we were asked, we were told that there would be £20 million coming that way over a 12, over a 10-year period. We have had an update from Breckland, and this trust told me on Friday that the funding is secured, it will be over 10-year period, and it will be on the themes of high streets, heritage regeneration, safety, security, transport connectivity. And whilst Breckland District Council will be the accountable body, there will be a requirement to establish a new town board, the responsibility to derive the priorities for investment and being ours for making change to steer the long-term vision for town hand in hand with the people. The town board will need to meet the government requirements, which will be chaired by a business person or local community leader, and will involve the local MP. At this moment in time, we have no further information of who will be on that board.
The fund will be called the 20 Minute City, Mr Chairman, and the 20 Minute City, and we will not be able to move around this.
We're expanding, that's my.
If you'd like to be informed of what it is about.
The fund will be called on this climate emergency. If there's violent attacks. You're ready as well. Are you getting smart, man?
So, there will be a need to establish a town board by the end of the summer 2024, and the monies, the all spending monies will not be available until 2025, 26th financial year. So that's the update that we've got, and I've given you as much information as we have at this point in time. But I thought it's useful to share it with the public, what we do have, and we all, we all welcome some investment in the town, which we've been pressing for 10 years. So I'm glad to move on to 79323. If you don't wish to listen, you can move outside. There's plenty of room out there.
It's usually like that, it's your last time round, ahead, exactly that. And he ran for the elections and he didn't work. But he went for the election. He went, he went for it, and he didn't win. I won't be, I won't be, like, on us, we only win anything.
Moving on to 79323, the G W standing for the charity.
Sorry, Chair, pardon me. There's too much, too much noise from the cattle.
Let's just continue. If you wish to talk, you can go outside, there's plenty of room.
If I could please ask you to not speak during this session. If you do want to speak, please leave. The Mayor has the right to ask you to leave as individuals, and we actually go to exercise that right if you don't keep quiet. With whoever it is. So thank you very much. We appreciate your, we appreciate your support.
So... The report is from the Stanleyford Charities. Councilors are aware, we as the town council are corporate. As members are aware, the Stanleyford Charity is as a corporate trustee, which is the deputy town council. We were looking into various potential ones, looking at the governance of that, and the following matters were discussed and agreed by the board. It decided that the current structure would be maintained, but developing a new governing document. There is noted that the liability of charity would remain with the town council as a trustee. Schedule of delegation to be developed, whereby the town council delegates certain standard operating decisions to the board, and following policies were developed and approved by the board. Conflict of interest, safeguarding, and complaints policies were adopted. We're looking to rent out the Stanleyford room, obviously with town council leaving there at the end of March. We will be looking to have that refurbished and available for use. And obviously, we welcome ideas from a stand, from a standard perspective, get the income to make use of that space. The Plur also provide an update on the current status of leases, which will be looked at by a subgroup in due course. So, not too much for this council at this point to do, other than we maintain the status quo, but with a new governing document, and the liability will be maintained by the town council. But moving on to 79423, town council representatives on other bodies. Go around the table. Mr Terry.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Next Tuesday, myself and councillor Hazel McCambridge, who's the deputy chair of amenities, will be signing the pledge for everyone has the right to play at the Child Bowls Centre in front of breakfast, the Breckland Youth prize reward.
Okay. Thank you for that. I know they'll be pleased that the town council know that. And then table something further. Mr Donald.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to remind everybody about STAG is still working in the background. Our next meeting is on the 10th of May, which is a close meeting. The purpose of that now is to make sure that we are readying ourselves for the police SNAP meetings, which occur four times a year, and occasionally they're held outside the town boundaries. The next meeting that takes place is on the 14th of May at Goodestown, and that happens at 18:30. It will be advertised on the Breckland Police site. I urge anybody, either councillors or members of the public, to go to that if you wish to have Thetford's case stated. Thank you.
Okay. Number ten, Brindley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I attended yesterday a meeting of the St John's neighbourhood watch, which is a new institution. I'm very pleased that local initiative has set this up. I've encouraged people to support it if possible, particularly residents of St John's. The next meeting is on the 3rd of June, and there'll be details on social media.
Okay. Move then on to Orstham County and district councils. I know we've got councillor Pybird in the audience, and I'll ask him to lead off. Please report.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, for your information, the local plan consultation has been completed and will be reported to Cabinet in the near future. That will cover policy matters, goals, design allocations, et cetera. Norfolk County has currently considered the closure of late surgery and considered the collapse of one Norwich Health partnership, which included the Orbin Centre in Norwich, and that organisation lost performing in town for two years due to mismanagement, I understand. Breckland's currently heard reports from Norfolk Citizens Advice Bureau, have an update from UK Power Networks, centered mainly on making rural supplies more robust, and they had reports from a Pangle Revenues partnership, and different departments working in pensions, who work together to ensure everybody gets what they're entitled to in terms of housing allowances and the like. And my suggestion, the Returning Office has agreed to provide a page of additional guidance in respect of casual vacancies on town and parish councils. I know that this one arose, it took me nearly a full day of research to find out what procedures should be. And, um, it was announced yesterday, our government funding will be provided to a supporting food waste collection service, which is being mandated. And everyone can look forward to receiving container. That is my report. Any questions you have to say.
Questions, quite a time. Do you have any idea when the rubble out of the food waste is going to happen?
I don't know precisely. I would say sometime in the next couple of months.
And that will be circulated with residents, with the office residents.
Oh, yeah, everyone will be, um...
Excellent.
I think the, I'm aware a number of people don't want to participate, and I'm not sure whether Breckland will enable you to be a non-participant and do the right thing. Something to be discussed.
Thank you. Okay. No questions. So we'll move on to district councillors. Council Harvey.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things. At the last meeting, I mentioned that I was having discussions with Flagship over the garages. Please report that tomorrow, some people from High Up Flagship Managers are visiting some of the board, run down Gavion Rocks in our town with the idea of looking into getting them repaired. We've had two done this week already on Sir Michael's Close and Bracken Road, which you really urgently need doing. On another note, those of us who are locals will know there are three flags in the town, one on the corner of Ignilway, one on the corner of Newtown, and one in St Mary's Crescent. One of my bucket lists as a councillor was to try and get those renovated. I struggled and struggled and struggled to find out who owned these flags. Fortunately, the one on the bottom, on St Mary's Crescent, one I managed to get somewhere right enough, it said renewed by Pedder's Way, 1996, which means Flagship owned it, and they have owned up to owning this particular plaque, and they are going to look into renovating it and making it readable, because it is part of Thetford's history.
And Sir Harvey, for now, I know it's a point that you've talked to me about, and I did go around and photograph all the plaques, that they are within the conservation area document now, and will be there. So may I ask you, did the ones at Newtown get included in that pledge?
No.
Can we try and?
Just the one that Flagship sits on their property, which is in St Mary's Crescent. I'm still working on Newtown and Ignilway.
Thank you. And then, I'm not much of a question. I think the district councillors, Council Land.
I attended Breckland's overview and scrutiny, where I asked questions of both the Department for Work and Pensions and the Citizens Advice Bureau relating to the awful burden of debt that falls ever harder on residents. Also spoke about the inverted commas cliff edge that faces us all. Our once household referrals are ceased in six months' time. Safewell as I am to the government for not canning the schemes promised, it fills there just delays the inevitable. I also attended Breckland's local plan consultation, a meeting that will be of particular interest to the residents, my support in my role as town council for Priory, which of course contains the Avia Estate. On March 13th, I wrote to the management team, the charge of the, uh, the area behind the Norfolk Terrier, complaining about the state of the surface, which is currently in very poor condition. They got back to me almost immediately and have tasked a Green King contractor with carrying out the work to completely redo the surface, commencing on Monday, the 8th of April. As well as paying tribute to the management team, I feel sure all who use the shots or pub on and are going in close will welcome Mr Benham. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you. Good half the news, the spinner, but there for many years, that. Anything further on district councillors? Okay. I have a report from councillor Jeremy. He sends his apologies, knocking out to join us. He's representing Thetford at the Charles Bowls Centre at an awards evening held by the High Sheriff. And to like the many volunteers involved in the centre are being recognised by the High Sheriff. We're going to come out. He states that he has, or asked him to report that first phase of new pathway at Nuts Bridges has been completed, somewhat quicker than anticipated. Town council officers are continuing to work on getting the footbridge part completed. Please to confirm that Norfolk County Council's cabinet recently awarded funding to the second phase of the project, new pathway running alongside the river and for better. Debt applications for community safety funding have also been approved, as detailed last month, this will include new signs from London Road and Bridge Street, as well as Brandon Road. The new 30 mile per hour rangers, which will be introduced to reinforce the 30th message, is said, please to continue the partnership with councillor James, ensuring the Thetford wide commitment to road safety, which will be broken to the last question only. Uh, in addition, he's allocated five percent of his local member highways fund to contribute towards a new permanent vehicle activated sign from London Road to support wider community efforts to address safety issues in this area. Safety follow-ups at Bridge Street finding them replaced, and not quite in identity board, but to what was before, but they are at least black and metal. And lastly, the residents on York Way Winchester Way were without streetlights for several months due to ongoing faults, and its liaise direct in UK power networks, the police say progress has been made, and several are now working again. That's from councillor Jeremy. Moving on then to 79623, approval of financial regulations. Council Blackwater in the town to lead.
Finance and Personnel Committee have recommended the adoption of the financial regular regulations distributed to councillors in the supporting papers. Regulations have been amended, too. One, further strengthen the orders. Two, require the commercial leases to be authorised by the committee. Three, entrench the role of the Grants Working Group. Four, mandates the use of project managers. And five, screen lines tender documentation. And six, separated the administration of charities from the council's administration. The acting town clerk, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Quick. Do you have any questions for councillors for the recommendation? No. Proposer, second, let, 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 let's let, Johnson. All those in favour of adopting the regulations? Any gains? It's Carrie, thank you. Moving on to 79723, the street lighting within the sustainable urban extension known as Kingsley. Council still to lead.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'm very proud to represent Kingsley on the town council, and I've enjoyed discussing local priorities with the residents recently. And I've been contacted by a number of residents who are very concerned about the lack of streetlights on most of the roads in the area. The main road has street lighting, but also subsidiary roads that come off, they have not. Many moved in, so we completely unaware that streetlights will not be routinely provided, like all other Thetford communities. Residents at Kingsley pay the same level of council tax as companies in Thetford, but do not receive this key service. Worse still, in addition to their council tax, they also pay a state service charge, but that does not cover lighting. The lack of street lighting is a great concern for residents, who state that they've resorted to using their mobile phone flashlights during the evening when walking their dogs, that some residents no longer feel safe walking around, while they're worried about the potential increase in violent or rental social behaviour due to the lack of lighting, with most residents having now purchased a Ring doorbell device to provide a sense of security. Another valid cause of concern was the school projected to open in 2026. A large influx of children will be expected to walk to and from school in the dark, especially during the winter months when it gets up around 4pm. I was at a town council when the previous council decided not to take on responsibility for the streetlights, but I can understand their reasoning. The town council does not have responsibility for any lights currently, and there's a reluctance to take on yet another responsibility. The council has for many years taken on more and more services from the district council, play areas and toilets in the most obvious examples. I remember a press article at the time, Breckland to all towns like Thetford, if they didn't take on the toilet, they would close them, which is leaving an impossible situation. But the result of that decision on streetlights is not the community I represent, and it's not receiving a service for other communities in the Thetford area. We desperately don't want to create separate communities in one town. I would ask if members are minded to support this, we explore the reasons behind the previous council's decision and what the cost might be involved. Once we have all the facts at hand, we can then make a decision about future provisions.
Okay. Okay, I'm sure we take questions as being one of the old councillors who were present when that decision was made. At that point in time, Kingsley was not part of Thetford, and we were then asked to take on a liability that wasn't in our parish. And as you say, we did not have responsibility for lighting anywhere else, and so the offer to take on that extra liability while council taxpayers was declined. Obviously, the meaning value of that, we've obviously drawn attention to, and is up to this current council, if it wishes to, look at your options that may be available and the costs associated with that. Thank you. And so Land, I believe you want to go in.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to echo councillor Stuart's remarks. Streetlights are a valuable safety resource for pedestrians, particularly during the winter months. Also, according to a college of policing statement released in March 2022, improved street lighting has been found to reduce crime by, on average, 21% in areas where it has been improved, relative to areas where it has not. The College of Policing also claim it is possible to improve lighting, as lights have more of an impact where it is currently poor. I would comment that the decision by Norfolk County Council to no longer provide streetlights in new build areas seems to have been taken on financial terms only, and with little regard to residents' safety.
Thank you. Please.
Um, sorry. I agree, the streetlights, I think, were quite on on Kingsley. One of the big things with Breckland Norfolk is sustainable, as well, where they encourage people to walk, cycle, and things like that. People are not going to buy into that if they've not got a safe area to do that activity. And if it's just their own street, I think that's a problem. And I think we should look again at trying to put pressure on, and if necessary, and take it on ourselves, because personally, I wouldn't want to live in an area where there's no streetlights.
Thank you. Mr Donald.
Thank you, Chair. I think you make a very valid point about the lack of streetlighting. And when we had our presentation from Pigeon recently, it came to light about, about this issue. What's more concerning is the fact that our town is growing, and it will continue to grow. And so what this means is, they have decided to set a precedent in that this area hasn't got lighted, so you can guarantee pretty much all the future areas won't get lighted. That means unfortunately, that we will be pushed into a corner and have to decide whether we provide the lighting for somebody else's development. Now, as a member of STAG, and I fully concur with all the police reports, it's shown that it makes places safer. I get all that. But we don't have a responsibility now, and I think we're going to end up with a bigger responsibility for which we may not get the money back for. So I would concur and say that actually, we should be pressing for Norfolk to, to do their part in this. And it isn't just a polite letter, this is something that we really need to push, because frankly, even if we investigate, I don't think we can afford it in the long term, because we're only looking at one estate now, and that's going to grow and grow. Thank you.
Councillor Johnson and Councillor Breton.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I've just got a lot of comments on it. I was attending a children's party all weekend on the estate, and it was a lovely play park, and yeah, everything rode off it. There's nothing, and I was thinking, if I was living there, I would not feel comfortable or safe with my children going to that play park. So we've got an immunity there, and we can use it, and that in itself is a problem. So I, I fully echo other comments, yourselves, saying I think we do need to push this. And we are concerned about us holding a, holding the, well, in terms of having to fund this, et cetera, but I think we do need to do what we can to push it, because it's not right in estates like that, and it's only going to grow as, you know, in actual lighting.
Councillor Breton.
Thank you, Chair. I actually also attended the meeting that Pigeon presented, and I was one of the ones who was quite vocal about it. To me, it was completely overlooked because that only state there's no street lighting, besides all the points already mentioned, safety. And one of the big, I answered quite well, is that if they want to extend for a school there, and the community centre there, all those people, children, et cetera, you know, people with problems, or chefs or not, how will they be able to manoeuvre around the streets, in the dark particularly, you know, that comes later, three o'clock is pitch dark, and people need to move around. I did mention to Pigeon when they were here, okay, so, so they, they want the council, the Castle Town council, to take over royalty and the costs involved. This was the discussion. But also I asked them, I just talked to the council about this, and they said, well, the council is not willing to put people's up, to put light north. I said, well, I never asked for people's up. I did mention to them, it is a new state. We are in a modern world. It could be some sort of light that's powered through. So, you know, it could be solar, something that is auto-rechargeable, that is cost efficient. But it's not for the Castle Town council to install that. That's after the county council to do so. I'm, I'm with my colleagues on this one. There is no way that the Castle Town council can afford, or she take responsibility for street lighting when all the taxes, the majority of the chunk of the taxes, that realise this go to the council precisely, so can they provide, or is this a shutters going? Thank you.
Councillor Brinkley, Mr Harvey.
Sorry, I didn't, apologies, Mr Chairman. I often cross Nuts Bridges, and it's very deadly difficult tonight, because if there's a single light missing, one more is nearly absolutely on the corner with no lane, it's not there. It means that, it's unsafe to cross the bridges, it means that the new, uh, part that's being mentioned earlier in the meeting, and the Pose Bridge, will be un... part that's being mentioned earlier in the meeting and the post bridge will be unsafe. That's if one street light is missing. So imagine a whole street with no lights. Often this is an astonishing situation that we're in, that Norfolk County Council would even consider allowing the streets to be built with no public lighting. So I think we do need to notify Norfolk of our concerns and see whether we can get them to move on this issue. And if not, we may have to bite the bullet and ask whether there's some other alternative way of solving the problem. One that I must say I dislike, I've been taking on the streetlights is to avoid it if we possibly can. But we really need to be pushing Norfolk as much as we can to recognise that this is an absolute requirement of any street that it should have proper permanent public lights.
It's the home thing, councillor.
My opinion is that Norfolk, Breckham developers run roughshod over the estate. They could get away with that, building play areas. They promised play areas and they put the plans in. Suddenly they say they can't do it. We had an interesting meeting in Pigeon where things have moved. It's incredible. I mean, we should really hold the developers to task. They're the ones who should be putting the light in. They're the ones who are making all the money, billions and millions from the town, et cetera, building. The developers should be responsible. We have an area in the middle of the town with no streetlights because the developer took the money from the residents, went bankrupt and never put the streetlights in. The developers should be held to task. But that's only my personal opinion.
Thank you Chair. Just a couple of additional notes. Firstly, the residents of those estates pay a residence fee and they pay that to premium. And that's to look after their green spaces. It doesn't include the lighting, fortunately. I think also on another note, we were kind of hoodwinked a little bit by the two representatives who came to the meeting by saying this is all part of the new darker skies policy, it's more environmental. And I think we all realise this is absolute tush, particularly when we're talking about the safety of residents. So whichever way they kind of dress it up, I agree with councillor Harvey. It's Hopkins, Tilly and Taylor Wimpey who really need to be pressured. And finally, I would say that because the residents do pay a premium to live there, then I think as a council, we ought to encourage and support them in being active to counter what's happening to them. So we ought to support them in any sort of push they make to try and get that light and in however way they might want to do it. Thank you.
Well, councillor McCall, I can keep going for upper my words, but that's what I also was going to mention that I completely agree councillor Harvey. When we had the business division presenting to us, you know, there was a question that I closed regarding the section one oh six. This is usually the money that developers to be reinvested on community services. There was a small percentage that needs to be allocated from the developers into parks, the parks, community centres, whatever they may be. And they did mention, like I mentioned before, they are on the process of putting as well into central of any state as well. But to me, it's a bit baffling that how can you put some money into community services or play parks, but not into lighting? Certainly, you need to like to be able to use the community centres, use the parks. You can't have one or the other. I think the order of priority or their priorities are upside down, which is trying to build a house from the roof, having some of the foundations. And I think Max, like what on, we need to put pressure on that. The responsibility to relate with the developers and with county councils, certainly not with this council. Thank you.
Thank you. In the UK, there's a requirement to install street lighting where a speed limit for a motor vehicle of thirty miles or less is imposed. This is for two simple and logistical reasons. If a road, lane or street is such that it requires a speed limit to protect pedestrians, then that protection will be increased if there is illumination. It's like most of my colleagues said tonight, the guys from Pigeon saw a spokesperson the other week, they've hoodwinked the council. And having a state with so many houses, with no streetlight is actually appalling. Thank you.
I think it's a consensus here to explore provisions writing on there. Just asking for guidance how we talk this on. I suspect they do need to come to a meeting and be told what we are asking for. Although suggested also we need to have representatives from both Norma there and Breckham because Breckham do have some footway lighting within the town as well, which we get charged for by a special levy, if you notice the council text. So I think probably the way forward is to get the meeting together on this matter to see what possibilities there are. Retrofitting and digging up roads and street lamps in is obviously a costly thing which everybody is reluctant to do. However, the suggestion of possibly solar could be there, which means less work that we could need with the council meetings.
Could I ask that if we can get this meeting off, could we have it as a standalone meeting? So that it's not just tagged on to a normal committee meeting where we're then time limited?
Yeah, I would admit it being a one-off meeting where it probably takes all it does. So we're happy with that. Before the last part to try and organise something on those nights. Thank you. Okay, so seven nine eight twenty three then, the minstern improvement. My best partnership officer is not in attendance, but we do have a report on the view.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The T T B office has just given me a really brief overview of what actually has taken place there after the minstern's underpass. And those that could be, that's a pick on the weekend if we've actually seen how clear and good looking it was. It was really nice to be able to reinforce some of the things, comments that actually have been made. First of all, it's been funded by the Market Town Initiative Fund, the N T I Fund. The scope of the work was threefold. First of all, it was to remove the old dated artwork. The second element was to unlock the drains and that certainly has happened. And the third one is to do the ceiling cleaning and painting. There's also the minister underpass, it's got a little bit of dual ownership. So the county council owns the rights, that even some Breckham council owns other parts of it. So the additional work is that the county council had actually repaired the lighting cases. The final part of the project is with the ceiling, is that the ceiling being, has been scheduled to be cleaned. And they were hoping, they asked me to double check before I came to this meeting and unfortunately I haven't had the chance to do it. But it was actually cleaned yesterday, but it didn't look too bad when we went through it in the middle of the morning. And that's really all that the library brought back. Thank you.
As Henry Moore, the ceiling is clear and walked through there this morning and was complimented by a number of residents who are very pleased with the clean up work that has happened. That's Harvey.
Yeah, we had an online meeting with the N T I and they said not only we could do the underpass, they were going to actually paint the aluminium spiky fencing round the power plant and put some plants around the power plant. So as you walk through a young person out onto the Abbey Meadows, it was going to be maintained and brought up to standard. But is that not happening now? Well, I've got a window, Breckham.
I just listened, Chair. I know that it was the fall to make. I don't know whether any N T I was dear, because what tends to happen is Breckham councillors get the decision-making process on the N T I maybe. But I think good idea for a lot because it is, or carl's called the timing really. Okay, so we then move on to seven nine nine twenty three, an invitation to celebrate the twentieth anniversary agreement with Skriniar. To discuss, an invitation for the council to celebrate the twentieth anniversary of signing the partnership agreement between Deaf and Skriniar, to make an in principle decision whether to accept the invitation. In the past, we have tended to send a representative and I'll suggest that we may wish to continue that way forward. The deputy mayor will probably be the person who will be the representative. But anyone want to make a comment?
Yeah. I mean, I think the twinning that Deaf had in the past was one of our major assets. We had several speak of easy earth, people came across, lots of them. I think we should bring that back and start to reciprocate the twinning and do as much as we can.
Councillor Brindle.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I agree with that fundamentally. I think it was a great success when it started and the link with Skriniar was very much encouraged by the Polish side, who wanted to try and, at the time, I think, bring themselves into conversation and much more than that with Western Europe because of such a troubled and difficult history caused by large, unbearable neighbours. And I've been to Skriniar and was made extremely welcome there with a number of other councillors. I think also we ought to remember that within the population of Deaf, there was a certain number of Polish immigrants and we should really be doing something to make them aware, that we're at least aware that there are such a place as Poland and that there's not a lot to offer and that we have an opportunity to maintain some kind of link through this particular activity. I think, Mr Chairman, the suggestion was, was it not from Skriniar or is it not only perhaps it then, but they might also visit us or we might have some kind of activity. So I think perhaps we need to, at least in principle, agree that we will investigate the possibility of providing some activity that would enable us to invite representatives from Skriniar, just to say, this is a town with Polish immigrants and you're welcome here and please talk to them and please make them feel that they are not forgotten back home.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr Mayor. As some of the volunteers at Charles Borough Centre, I'm very impressed with the Polish school there. It's a real resource for the Polish community and also the British community. I would echo the comments of councillor Brindle. I think we should go ahead with this. I was still here actually on the map to see where Skriniar is and bizarrely, I've actually travelled through the city. So there's a personal reason for going ahead with this. I think these things are relatively good. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Breckham.
Thank you, Mr Sir. Everybody, this was a good journey by the way. I'm full in favour of twinnings. I've been from, I've been from Breckham. I'd actually been the only one who was at the young with the information about this, up on the bridge that resides locally and are part of the fabric of this community. I'm all for celebrating the different cultures, bringing people together. I think this is a great opportunity for the Polish community. I do have friends in the Polish community, Terry quite mentioned, the Polish school. It is a strong asset. They do quite well. They're becoming increasingly more popular. And those communities need to find a way to celebrate. We need to find us a way to celebrate together with them in a way that's personal. It's not about celebrating in solution, but about celebrating together. So I think reinforcing and exploring this opportunities are the directions the council manages is the right path to work together, I say, to build those links and make them stronger. And fully favour of this link, then we're going to work and if there's any assistance, I can provide options and help to give it. Okay.
Thank you. I said my two. I did go to Skriniar as the deputy mayor a couple of years ago. Councillor Brindle said you are both made most welcome. They do have a little bit more of a budget than we do for twinning things, so I'm mindful of that. We can do a little bit more, I think, with the desire to do things without costing you. And bringing our Polish community would be something to help this side. We could bring them over. You talked about Polish school and somehow some kind of festival where we could get people together to celebrate the Polish things. And I'm sure there are other people who'd like to get involved. So it may be, I think we refer this to the detail, to the civic things, but in principle, as a council, we're happy to support the celebration of twentieth anniversary. Yep. Okay, thank you. So on to eight hundred twenty three, community engagement to discuss any consultation or media release required. Is there anything that councillors wish to bring to table, to press or other city? Now in which case, then we move on to eight hundred and twenty three, committee officers update. Thank you, I think, to the office.
There's an update.
That one's easy. So on to eight hundred and twenty three, exclusion of press and public. Consider resolving to suit to the Public Bodies Mission to Meetings Act two hundred and sixty. Press and public be excluded to any remaining items of business on brands. Publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. We're happy to exclude the rest of the public councillors. So just thank all the public who are happy in attendance and you'll be prepared with the meeting this evening and hopefully you'll come to see us again. Next one with your questions that they need asked. Thank you.